Welcome to the January 10, 2017 edition of the Brevard County Commission meeting. On this 10th day of the new year, which means, obviously, we only have 255 more days until we get to 2018. And on this day in history, way back in 1861, our very own state of Florida seceded from the Union. So that's your little bit of historical trivia for today. And with that, I call this meeting to order. And we'll have our invocation started by Commissioner Barfield.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Reverend Corky Calhoun from Georgiana First Methodist Church in Merritt Island. Reverend Corky?
I want to thank Commissioner Barfield for the invitation to come tonight to share in the kicking off of 2017 and the business of our county. Georgiana is a Methodist church that is 130 years old on South Merritt Island, predates this board. And so God's presence in our community has been significant for quite some time. So it is a privilege for me to be here tonight. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we come to you tonight and we just give thanks for these men and women who have given their life and service to their community. Father, we pray over the business of this board and this commission as they begin 2017 with a vision for our community in mind and in heart. Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment to go along with the character and the integrity that each of these men and women have. Father, it takes a special person to live under public scrutiny. And so we ask that you would protect their minds and their hearts from those who would be hostile to the movement that is required to create an orderly and functioning and thriving community like Brevard County. So Father, as the business begins for the year and begins tonight, we pray your blessing over the room. May we all be reminded that as we move forward, that it takes the hearts of men and women together in harmony in an age of great disunity to find a way to create a community as beautiful as ours. So Father, bless them, watch over them, and may this year be fruitful for our community and beyond. And we pray this in the name of the one who blessed us. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 18, 2016, and November 3, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. And I need one more for November 22, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would anyone like to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Okay, the resolutions, I'll start, I have the only resolution tonight, proclaiming January 2017, 2017 as Hadassah, you gotta have a heart month. Let me read this. Would you like to come up? And I'll read this so everybody knows what we're doing here. Whereas Hadassah is an international organization which raises funds to support medical research as well as educational, youth, and humanitarian projects in Israel and throughout the world. And whereas Hadassah Medical Organization is engaged in cutting-edge medical research for the benefit of all humanity. And whereas the Brevard County chapter of Hadassah has for 50 years supported the work of Hadassah and particularly the work of Hadassah Medical Organization and the construction and operation of teaching hospitals in Israel. And whereas the Brevard County chapter of Hadassah will hold a You Gotta Have Heart Gala on January 28, 2017 at Temple Israel in Vieira with dinner, entertainment, auctions, and guest speakers, all profits to support heart research. At Hadassah Medical Organization in Israel and in the United States, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of January 2017 as Hadassah, You Gotta Have Heart Month. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 10th day of January 2017, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, the pass is 5-0. Would you like to talk a little bit about Hadassah?
Well, I'd like to thank you to begin with for your support, for Commissioner Smith's support and help. Hadassah's been in Brevard County, as I said, for over 50 years. And the medical research that we support in this particular gala is for cutting-edge heart research using stem cells that are found inside the patient's own heart, used for repairing the heart. Hadassah is known for many kinds of medical research. They have a 97% cure rate for hepatitis C. They've actually been able to halt the progression of Lou Gehrig's disease, MS, in their testing and their trials. And it's a very worthwhile organization. It's almost a shotgun approach to supporting various types of medical research, and the work they're doing is really phenomenal. I want to thank this board for its support and for the proclamation. And of course, anybody would like to attend, it's going to be a very, very interesting, informative, and fun evening. Thank you.
Are there any items that anyone would like to pull?
Oh, good.
Hearing, none. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Pass is 5-0. The motion was to accept the consent agenda as...
You'll leave the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion.
Commissioner?
I second.
Pritchett. Commissioner Barfield, second. I'll catch on to this, just give me time. All right, we'll move into public comments. I have three public comments. Michael Wilson? State your name and your address, please.
Sure. Michael G. Wilson, 2562 Sykes Creek Drive, Merritt Island, Florida, 32953.
Thank you.
The reason I've come before the board tonight is I wanted to ask a question which I thought was important for many citizens. Many of us come to the board to say our piece. And in the past, it seems as though you can have a great number of people come and speak, and it doesn't move the needle with the commission. And sometimes you can have a relatively small number come, and it makes a big difference. I would like to know from this body, for 2017, in your view, each one of you, what does it take in order for public comment to move the needle with the county commission?
Thank you. Richard Charbonneau?
Well, Richard Charbonneau, Satellite Beach, 420 Port Royal Boulevard. It's good to all see you all here at the beginning of the year, new board, new faces. Some of you know my face, some of you like it, some of you don't, too bad. I like the idea of a nighttime meeting because, for me, I'm semi-retired, so I can come the day or night, it's no big deal for me. But you know, some people, you have a husband and wife both working, and you know, to roll out here at 9, 10 o'clock in the morning, you have to miss work. And some of the people with husband and wife both working, you know, some of the items that you're doing here are important to them. And to, you know, constantly exclude them and have basically only the retirees or the semi-retirees seems kind of unfair. So I don't know, I think this is a good idea. At least it gives the, you know, the working people, particularly, you know, a lot of people, their husband and wife are both working these days, and you know, gives at least one the chance of one of them to come out here and, you know, see what's happening. Otherwise, you know, they have to take off of work, and you know, some people just can't take off work. So anyways, good, I think it's a good move, and let's give it a try. And you know, maybe get the word out a little more if we get a little bigger crowd. I mean, I only found out about it from Mike Wilson last night, but I would not have come if, you know, if Mike didn't mention it to me. So anyways, good deal.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Charles Tovey?
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne, Florida, 32940. Happy New Year and welcome, all of you, to your new positions. And I have some literature on my history and I'm not arguing qualms about things, but we were the first settlers, according to this, and I'm looking for recognition and some other things, just a moment.
Commissioner Tobias, thank you very much. Commissioner Tobias, I did listen to you a couple of your discussions on the radio and some other media avenues, and I appreciated what you said and your outlook on things. And as well as Commissioner Pritchett, I appreciate your views on other things and watch your meetings. And Commissioner Smith, I appreciate your expediting the roads and some other issues that have been put aside for temporary. And thank you very much, and Happy New Year to you all. Can't forget you, Commissioner Barfield, thank you for your service to our county and to our first responders and everybody else that you care for. I do have seeds for schools, and instead of passing a bunch of my stuff up to you guys, I'm going to leave it with the manager's office or contact your office and make arrangements that way. And if you have any other questions, I had copies, but the printer was down and it was color copies. But I would like to produce some of my literature to you and some other information I have about the lagoon. And it's what I feel is pretty pertinent and hasn't been redundant, and it's easy solution or partial help. Thanks for your time and welcome, and Happy New Year.
That's all the public comments that we have. Moving into public hearings. 4A.
Commissioners, this is a petition for a vacating of a utility usement along the common lot line of two lots which are owned by the same person for purposes of being able to build more or less unified by the two lots. We've not received any objections from any of our utilities or others who would normally object. We did receive an objection from a property owner, a nearby property owner, who asked for more information. We provided that information, we've heard no more objections.
Pleasure of the board. I'll move to accept petition.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield and a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 4B.
Commissioners, this is a petition to vacate two pieces of public road right-of-way in the Cannavale Groves subdivision in the vicinity of existing the beach line. It is associated with the All-Aboard Florida Project, and they are the petitioner. We have received no objections to the petition to vacate, and we have no known public use for the subject property.
Okay, I have two cards on this. Mason Blake?
Thank you. My name is Mason Blake, I'm with the Dean Mead Law Firm, 7380 Morel Road, Vieira, and we represent the petitioner. Just simply like to reiterate that there really is no available use for this property by the public. The petitioners own all of the property on either side with the exception of one gentleman who has joined in the petition. And we have satisfied the concerns of county staff, have a unity of title agreement to make sure that there's no possibility in the future of a landlocked parcel being created. We've worked with the public utilities involved and have two utility agreements with FPL, which will make sure that there's no utilities problems as a result of the vacation. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? We have one more card, but this is for Matt Hanson, and it's for questions only. So we have no questions. Pleasure of the board.
I move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Moving on to new business. 6D.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for an executive session with the board on the Deseret Ranch versus Brevard County Administrative Appeal, which is going on in Tallahassee.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone wish to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield to approve this schedule request, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
My name is Don Weaver, I'm a veteran of the United States Army. I reside at 3060 North Atlantic Avenue, apartment 410, Cocoa Beach. I come to you tonight as a veteran of representing 70,000 veterans in the county, which I consider to be the most veteran-friendly county in the state, probably the country. I welcome the new members of the commission and as president of the Military Officers' Association and chairman of the Expansion Committee of the Veterans Memorial Center. You can see how much support is meant to veterans in our county by visiting those places. Several years ago, a group called the Central Florida National Veterans Foundation approached your predecessors to ask for funding support. One of eight counties in Central Florida provides support to the Central Florida National Monument located at Lake Nona, the new VA hospital. That is a beautiful memorial that is now constructed and completed in terms of the structure, but Brevard never signed on. Two years ago, in the midst of an expansion of our veterans center, we decided that this was the time to focus on Brevard, and some veterans wrote letters to the commission suggesting we not weigh in at that point. Years later, though, we're conspicuously absent there. So I speak to you tonight on behalf of veterans, who we have 169 Brevard veterans, names etched in the memorials on those walls from World War I to Afghanistan. My son's name is on Afghanistan wall. We also have hundreds of Brevard veterans who go to Lake Nona every week, dozens who live there and are treated there, some, you know, long-term and hospice-type care. They go to these gardens, which includes a chapel, and they understand about what they've been through, and they see this place of rest and peace. They really understand how important it is to be recognized, they see the names of their fallen colleagues from the wars they were involved in. And it shows them the public really cares and we're there. Yet Brevard is absent. At this point, my request, representing veterans, and I hope your own feelings on this, is that Brevard becomes involved in the maintenance, the support of that beautiful garden. My suggestion is between 30,000 and 25,000 on a one-time donation to handle and cover some maintenance and thus add Brevard to that list of all the other counties. Orlando gave $500,000. The other counties averaged $130,000. It was a time of, you know, a different focus. Please do not think of this as a charity. It is an effort to help veterans understand and find a place where they can find peace and solace and where all Americans can understand the sacrifices made by veterans over the years. It's a beautiful place, the chapel is very special, it's used all the time by veterans in trouble, veterans, you know, facing their end of life, and the Brevard numbers of citizens that go to Lake Nona is substantial. At this time, I would like to introduce Jerry Pierce from the foundation, who's been a driving force for 10 years to finish my time. Thank you for listening.
I'm not Jerry Pierce, I'm the substitute, I'm Charlie Brenner.
Yeah, I have your card, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Smith, and members of Brevard County Commission. I thank you for allowing us to take the time to grant...
Mr. Brenner, could you give us your address, please?
Sure. 3586 Aloma Avenue, Winter Park, Florida.
Thank you.
Sorry. I thank you for allowing us to take the time to request a grant for the Veterans Memorial at Lake Nona. I've lived in Orlando now for about the past 50 years, but prior to that, I was here in Brevard County, working on IBM, with IBM, on the Apollo project back in the 60s. I'm past president of Central Florida Veterans Group and currently on the Board of Directors of the Central Florida Memorial. Lake Nona's VA Hospital is serving six counties, a little correction here, it's six counties, not eight, to serve and include Brevard and the 75,000 veterans that we have currently in Brevard County. And we hopefully, by putting the VA hospital there, it's going to save a lot of time where you used to go to Tampa in order to have hospitalization for the veterans. We also, the same group who helped get the VA hospital there to Lake Nona. In fact, the site that we're in the running, which we were trying to get a site even closer to Brevard County, was at Corporate Park. And one thing I'd mention to you is the fact that we are all volunteer group, we do not have any paid staff. The upkeep of the foundation of the memorial is by us, not the VA. Reason being is because it's a private project and requesting monies are needed for the continuing upkeep of the memorial. Of the six counties, Brevard is the only county still missing to help the memorial. We do have plaques that we put up for the people like myself and others who have donated their monies and the counties. And like I say, Brevard is absent. Remember, while the memorial is to honor the fallen, is also a place for the living and is a place of healing. For those who visit it, we have seen where veterans going to the new VA hospital at Lake Nona in between their treatments, that they come out to visit the memorial and see the names of the fallen friends, and often they go to the chapel to pray. Central Florida Veterans Memorial Park isn't about meals for homeless veterans or housing, is healing for the living and recognition of the fallen, and we humbly ask for your help. Thank you, and if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Pleasure of the board. We'll go to F2. Permission to advertise public hearing on January 24 regarding ordinance relating to Mr. Tobias, would you like to speak to this?
If that's your intent, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And thank you to not only my staff, but county staff who worked so diligently to put this good ordinance together. And I think it's good to start at section 1 and just read off one sentence, which I think encapsulizes the intent of this ordinance. The board is adopting this ordinance is to protect citizens' right guaranteed by First Amendment to the United States Constitution to speak, publish, and petition government officials while at the same time protecting citizens' rights to open government as guaranteed by Article 1, Section 24 of the Florida Constitution. There are a couple points to this proposed ordinance, and I think there's been some miscommunication on this, and I think it's very, very important to clear that up, so we go in with at least knowing what this ordinance seeks to do. And to be very clear, at this juncture, all I am is requesting the board the ability to advertise this in the Florida State, which I've been advised will be about $180. But the three main points of this ordinance, and I'd be glad to answer anything in detail, is to have a registration of the lobbyists that conduct their business in Brevard County, as well as a list of the principals of which they represent. To disclose the fees that they receive from those principals, and most importantly, to have a recording, or not a recording, but a record, excuse me, of the meetings that these paid lobbyists have with elected officials. As an aside, and most importantly, I want to point out, this will by no means infringe on any citizen's right to speak with their elected official. In fact, quite the opposite. If you are not getting paid to speak on behalf of anyone, there is no registration, there is no disclosure. In fact, the information that would be provided in this ordinance would give you more information. You would have the ability to know if your elected official had already met with a lobbyist, whether it be on your side or the opposing side. So this, the intent of this ordinance, and this is not new, none of this is new or groundbreaking, this is a culmination of what other cities and counties, as well as the state of Florida, has done, to put some sunshine on what goes on in Brevard County. I'd be more than willing, like I said, get in detail, unfortunately, we've had some dark clouds over Brevard County recently, and there are some across the state of Florida. And the more sunshine I think that is available, the less likely that those bad actors will decide to go down those paths. So that's the intent, Mr. Chair, and stand ready to answer any questions.
We have two requests to speak. Pam LaSalle?
I feel a little bit like Robert Browning. I have too many things to be thankful for with this coming to light. I'm very enthusiastic about it, I think it's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction. Lobbyists influence policy and the spending that our government incurs. It would increase transparency for the citizen and make it a shortcut instead of having to dig through multiple sources of records to find any kind of trail to follow where the money goes. It would help watchdogs and others, that I'll get to later. The concern over the financing of this, I read the article... The concern over the financing of this, I read the article in the paper. I fully believe it will be self-funding, and that anyone who hides behind the cost is going to have their concerns, by me, considered disingenuous, because I think it would be a great value to the taxpayer. And I didn't have to look too far to find some examples. I wasn't at the meeting in December, but the leases for the two offices for D1 and D5 Commissioners, I looked at. And lo and behold, on the building for the D5, several of the owners gave significant campaign contributions, and among that record listed one of them as a lobbyist. And I think that's relevant to the taxpayers. When you look at the lagoon tax, for anyone who looked through that information, the principals on the only company named in the lagoon plan were registered lobbyists with the St. John's Water Management District. The IRL Council, the person they hired as their director, was a lobbyist for the same company in the same year that he was hired. I have advocated before this Board, prior to this meeting, to stop texting, and part of the reasons during meetings, and part of the reasons I would like that, is because lobbyists can influence what votes are taken and what information reaches you. And lastly, I sat through nearly every one of the charter review meetings. This was the very last thing that was discussed. One of the members put it forward to have it as an ordinance, though the charter review is only for amendments to the charter. There was a great deal of discussion, and they proposed to, that it was not appropriate to be an amendment, but they proposed a resolution to move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. And I don't know what happened to that, but they proposed that you consider an ordinance to register lobbyists. And several of the people on that charter review were self-proclaimed lobbyists, including the Chair, who was the Chair of this charter review and the last charter review. And as someone who advocates for oversight, I find it very difficult to go to that body and ask them for oversight when they have a vested interest to not have oversight. So I don't know what happened, but I listened to the tape again last night, just to affirm my memory. And three people of the charter review dissented on moving this forward as a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions?
How many people sat on the Board?
I think 15 were there that day. Fifteen were on that Board, and I believe they were all present.
You're saying only three people dissented, so why didn't we hear it?
I don't know. They were supposed to, there were no more meetings. It was the very last thing and the very last meeting. And they were supposed to send it to you. And you can request that information. They did not do minutes, they did audio recordings. And so you would have to, I would think, your staff could get that for you. And it's the very last thing on April 27th. And of the voices, I don't remember the room, we were there that day. I don't remember the room, but from the voices, I could recognize the Chair, Kendall Moore dissented, and Henry Minibu dissented. And I don't know the third person, but I heard the count. So for what it's worth, I think it's a step in the right direction, a tiny step. It's part of oversight. I don't know how we're going to know who a paid lobbyist is. Unless it's self-confessed, it's kind of like y'all's text. Oh, these are the ones I think are subject to public records. Thanks.
Ronald Barcher?
Thank you. My name's Ronald Barcher. I reside at 3431 Grantline Road in Memes. I'm recommending the Board not create an ordinance that requires registration of lobbyists. I've spoken on numerous occasions to this Board. Most of the times, I was addressing a specific issue on the Board agenda. Only a few times did I speak during public comment or public hearing. I occasionally speak on behalf of the Friends of the Memes Scottsmore Library or the Memes Community Group. I'm a volunteer. I'm not paid by either of these organizations. Neither I nor either of these organizations can afford lobbyist registration fee. Occasionally, I speak to members of the county staff directly. Sometimes these conversations occur while the staff member is performing his job out in the field. In reading the proposed ordinance, I see that it requires each member of the staff to make a record of every meeting. How would the staff member determine that the person he's speaking to is a lobbyist and not merely a concerned citizen? Well, of course, you just ask him. He's going to tell you the truth, right? He won't lie. Nobody ever lies. And how does the staff member know the person is being paid to lobby on the subject that they're discussing and not simply being a concerned citizen about some other topic? It's possible for a paid lobbyist to be a concerned private citizen on some subject that he's not being paid to lobby. I believe this ordinance will infringe on my rights to address this Board and other county staff. I also believe that enforcement would be impossible. In addition, it creates an additional work for each member of county staff. I understand the need for such ordinance in a few other counties and in the state legislature, but I have more trust in our local officials. Please do not create such an ordinance. Thank you.
Matt and I?
Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the new Commissioners to being on the Board, so look forward to great things in the future. Second of all, I wanted to thank you for scheduling some of these meetings at night, because it makes it easier for people like me that are on the road all day to get here. So I had a specific question, it kind of relates to the gentleman's comment there. In the past, I've come before the Board as a representative of my employer, because I saw areas for improvement in the county's technology, you know, communications infrastructure, things like that. My understanding is I would not be considered a lobbyist, or would that make me a lobbyist by virtue of the fact I'm an employee of a company that sells something? Like, if I come to the county and say, hey, I can save you a million bucks a year on your phone system, am I a lobbyist, or am I just a concerned taxpayer that lives here and works for somebody that does that? So that's my only question, concern, ties into the last gentleman's concerns. If that doesn't make me a lobbyist, I am in 100% support of this. I think it's wonderful. As Ms. LaSalle said, this did come up on the Charter Review Commission. We did have some discussion, and it did not garner the votes it needed to move forward. But I did support the motion then, and I support this effort now. So is that possible to get an answer to that question now, or is that something that needs legal?
We can cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the Board? I don't have any comments. Nobody wants to speak? Mr. Tobias, you didn't request, you didn't push your little button, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
We'll cover you. I got you. He has first.
I'll just respond to any questions, if that's okay.
Go ahead and ask. You said you had something to say regarding that one gentleman.
Okay, just to be clear, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of those white hat clients. But to be very clear, if you were not paid by any of those Boards, you would not be subject to any of the registration, any of the fees, anything outlined in here. We are just trying to identify the folks that are paid in order to sway the five of us up here to vote one way or another. And it is my understanding, the way that the ordinance is written, and maybe we need to do, maybe we need to make this slightly more clear, and this is a work product here that has changed many times, and I send it out to my fellow Commissioners. Five or six days ago, to get input, so they would have suggestions to craft it or hone it in a better way, that the definition of a lobbyist would be that you were paid specifically to lobby on behalf of an organization or a corporation. So if you were employed to sell telephones or IT equipment, and you did not have a lobbying contract, then you would not be subject to that registration fee. And to be very clear, the reason we do have a registration fee is to cover the cost of the database. Staff indicated that this would be about 800 hours, and I know nothing about IT, so I take it at face value. Fort Lauderdale did a database a number of years ago that has been working extremely effectively. They have indicated that they are willing to give us the code for the database for approximately $10,000, a one-time fee. So a $250 cost per lobbyist, and an estimated 20 lobbyists would draw $5,000 a year. At the end of two years, that $10,000 would be recouped, so there was no taxpayer money that went in it, just the lobbyists. And then that fee could be decreased. There would be no maintenance fee. This would not be creating any new departments. This would not create any new work on staff. The one thing would be the annual registration, in which the lobbyist would send out their name, the principles. It would be PDFed and put on the website, wouldn't need to be searchable. So maybe a couple hours, unless, I guess, you got blueware, and then it may take six or eight years to do it, and cost $7 million. But I believe that this is something that is worth the cost, and it will not be borne by the taxpayers of Brevard County.
Commissioner Zanardi, you have the floor.
I guess you answered a few of my questions. And, you know, I think as long as the ordinance is very clear, because again, I had some of the concerns expressed. I think it's a great ordinance as far as tracking lobbyists with that title. However, I think we want to be very careful on our wording when we do say, come up with a final version of this ordinance that it specifically states that they are a lobbyist and hired under those pretenses. Because my concern, like, an example that I had come up with or that I had thought of was, what of the gentleman that works for a cab company and the county's trying to change the rules, and he comes and speaks on behalf of his own employer? I mean, I wanted to make sure that he wouldn't be considered a lobbyist. Or if, you know, anybody has anything before the Commission, if it directly affects, if the guy that owns the gas station and he's concerned about us implementing a gas tax, I want him to be able to call me and say, can we talk about this? Without, I mean, I often disclose everybody I talk to, just so, I'm very transparent. But I want to make sure that, you know, we're not hurting employees, and I want that very, very clear in this ordinance. And I'd be thrilled to support something that just pertains to the lobbyists. Does that make sense?
Any other comments?
Mr. Tobias? I think I have one more question.
Sure.
What of the suggestion, and I know this is a 15-page ordinance, and I read it to the best, of course, of all the details of my ability, but what of the requirement suggested by our citizen that came up and spoke of the staff having to keep a log? Is that something necessary? Or is that something that the onus goes back to the lobbyist that meets with the staff member or meets with one of us?
Thank you. And I think that probably was an older version that, this was a working document.
Yeah.
And Fort Lauderdale did a darn good job. My question was, you know, a lobbyist wants to meet with a legislator, they have to pull their car over, get on a computer. And I'd be more than willing to share, the code that Fort Lauderdale did is an app. So these lobbyists, not that I ever suggest driving and texting, but it's not illegal yet. You can flip through your phone and go with, put down Tobias as one of the drawdowns, and then you work for All Aboard Florida, flip through All Aboard Florida, put the time in, hit send, it becomes a record. There is no, in the new version, onus on the elected official to keep a log, because then that becomes onerous. It's if an elected official or any person working for the county that specifically stated notices that an impropriety is taking place, then it becomes incumbent on that individual to report that. However, there is no need for that person to keep a log, either prior or post that meeting.
Because I didn't see it in the final version, but I wanted just clarification on that. So would you be open to making that a very clear, you know, definition of lobbyist, rather than somebody who is compensated by a company, say? Because again, like I said, I think we have to be very careful on how we word that. I mean, do they have to be registered with the state lobbyist? Or would they have to be a lobbyist, say, in government relations? Or would they be a, you know, if their sole primary purpose, like you stated, would be lobbying, whether it be us or whether it be, you know, people that could lobby us? I mean...
Thank you. And I should have shared this. I have an opinion from the Commission on Ethics, as well as House Counsel, because I ran into a similar issue. There is a lobby ban for a number of years after you leave the Legislature. In my duties as a college instructor, I help students participate in government. I don't lobby, but I inform them who they may want to speak with and what would facilitate their end goal. Many times, it's not my end goal, as you can imagine, you know, 18- and 19-year-old students. And the opinion that I got from the Commission of Ethics, as well as House Counsel, is since that was in my duties as an instructor at a college, and since I was not being contractually paid to lobby on behalf of the college or those students, I was able to facilitate that meeting. Now, I imagine that that would pertain pretty closely over here, more than, I'd be more than willing to share it, but I think it's better to put in the ordinance, as you've suggested, that you must be hired for that particular purpose.
Or that it's their primary function.
Or have a contract stating that. I think that those are very good suggestions that would make this much more clear.
Okay.
Commissioner Pritchett, Chair recognizes you.
Thank you. Mr. Tobias, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this. And I'm going to really enjoy you bringing these types of things to help challenge thinking. Couple of my thoughts, and maybe you can help me work through them, or maybe we can't. But what I'm doing right now, what I was doing in the past, everybody's lobbying me. Matter of fact, my family lobbies me all the time on top of it. But, so I think the definition of lobbying is going to have to be really clarified for me to even get comfortable with it, because I don't want to do anything to put any kind of restrictions on my constituents, be able to talk to me. They're business owners. When I first got on city council, we had a great reputation of being hard to deal with. There were so many layers of bureaucracy and government that nobody could do business. And you guys have heard the rumors in the past, that we worked real hard to get rid of all those extra layers of government so people can do some business. Now, does that mean I don't believe in transparency? Absolutely not. I believe in transparency, and I think we should all be transparent with what we're doing. But I don't want to add at this moment, and, you know, have to think through it, one more layer of government for people to try to get through. And there's just no way it'll be self-funding, because I have just watched over the years, anytime we add something extra in government, it comes with a hefty price tag. There's going to have to be salaries, there's going to have to be IT, everything to keep up with it, trying to do the fines, trying to collect the money. But I'm not throwing it away totally, but these are my struggles with it. So those types of things, I think it's things we're going to have to get working through. I've always been a great contender of less government and not more government. It's, you know, just what I believe, you know, I'm just that old Republican at heart. So whenever we go to add more government on, I'm going to do it very slowly. Whenever we're going to add more laws on, I'm probably going to do that very slowly, too. Not that this might not be something I consider as we move forward, but I have only been doing this for two months, and I haven't really seen an issue yet for this to have to wrap around. Not that there isn't, I just haven't seen it yet. And at the city level, the local level, I just didn't see it at all. So probably tonight, I'm not going to support this. Not that I'm totally throwing it away, but right now, I'm not real sure. I've got myself wrapped around it enough to want to move forward, but maybe you can change my mind.
Sure. Well, thank you for bringing up some very good issues there. And just because things haven't happened in Brevard County in the last month doesn't mean they've happened previous. And I hate to bring up, you know, the bad parts of Brevard history, but very shortly, we will find our Clerk of the Court in court for one of these very reasons, the lack of transparency and other things that come along with that. Not only that, a lobbyist who was involved in that, as well as what would be- Not only that, a lobbyist who was involved in that, as well as what would be a principal. These things happen in Brevard County. Not only do they happen in Brevard County, we had a commissioner in Opa-locka, not last month, not last week, but today, who pled down from a felony to one misdemeanor, and now I guess he took $40,000 in bribes. But the good news is he'll only have to spend three years in jail instead of five. I just grabbed some stuff, some from some questionably reputable sources. Harvard University ranked Florida as one of the most corrupt states, and that was the best one I could find. When I got a little more specific, I found out that Integrity Florida, which ranks the southeast, put us at number one. And there's, we need to watch out, 1,726 Florida public officials have been convicted of public corruption since 1976, so that's my lifetime, I guess. The University of Chicago ranked us as number four. And 2015, Florida earned a D minus. We were 30th of 50 when it comes to government accountability and transparency. And I agree, these are small steps, but this is technology that will not create more government. Speaking with some folks who have worked with this database down in Fort Lauderdale, it doesn't put more FTE. I'm very cognizant of adding dollars to, to the budget. I, you know, I worked extremely hard to take an office that my predecessor had been in and move to a government facility so we could save tax dollars, while, you know, other commissioners decided to move their office 1.6 miles away and put taxpayers on the hook for $55,200 over the next four years. So this will have an impact of one-fifth of what the move will do, assuming that lease holds for those four years. And that will be borne by the taxpayers. I'm a conservative, a fiscal hawk. This will be borne by the lobbyists that make tens or even hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to convince us to vote one way or another.
Chair recognizes Mr. Barfield.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Knox a question. The way I read this ordinance, it's strictly for unincorporated county, doesn't include the constitutional officers, the charter officers. It doesn't, it doesn't include any cities. It's only the unincorporated area of the counties.
Correct. It's only the county commission and the county employees, yes.
Well, I have, I mean, I have, I share Commissioner Pritchett's concern about layers of government. And really, you know, I haven't seen the problems, I've been here two years, I haven't seen issues with lobbying or any of that, but I do see, I share some of the feelings that Commissioner Pritchett has. And I'm thinking about the, how things operate for us to be able to do our job. And one of those is whenever we have, especially in planning and zoning, we have some come up, and we declare then who we've talked to in every case that comes up. But it's important for us to be able to get that information, to know both sides of the story, because in five minutes, it's not, doesn't really give us a lot to go on. We need to know, you know, information so we can do our own research, and we do all that before we come up here. I don't want to hinder any of that any way possible, because we do have to have as much information as possible to make the right decisions. And what that means is, any of these people who, and if you, I don't know if you're going to change where you have to be specifically paid as a lobbyist, but you have lawyers representing their clients that come forward, or engineers that represent their clients to provide us information. You know, if that's, is that lobbyists, too? Okay, well, it's not really clear to me, and I don't know which iteration I have now, so I haven't got the, I guess I don't have the latest one. Maybe I do. But anyway, I'm just concerned that we're going down path that, I'm not, I just don't, I'm not clear on all this stuff. And I want to see, it has to be hashed out on how, how this would be put into work, exactly who is affected, who isn't. And I'll give you one other example. I have, we have walk-ins, we have an open house in my district twice a month for two to three hours, and anybody can come in and talk to us. It can be a company, it can be anybody comes in, and they talk about whatever they want to, and we, it's a free interchange. I'm concerned about any of that, if that would limit what I could do as far as, you know, speaking with the public. And so there's a lot of things I'm just not comfortable with yet.
I have a couple of questions for you. You were, you were telling us earlier that Florida ranked so very low on so many different viewpoints and opinions. What is, what, do you have any idea what the criteria was for those rankings?
I have, I have all of them. I mean, if you name which one, I would be more than willing to...
Well, I'm just curious as to, you know, what makes us, what makes us so bad compared to, I'm from New Jersey, and I, and I know what crooked people do up there. I spent a lot of time near Atlantic City and Atlantic County. Probably three out of the last six mayors went to jail, and the state came down and took over the county because it was so crooked.
Can I answer some of the criteria that they used?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to know what their criteria was, if you had it handy, or...
Sure, sure.
You can get it to me later.
Absolutely. You know, it centers on the basis for each one. The only commonality was elected officials that had been found guilty and spent time behind bars as over population. So Florida's a big state, but still...
So what are you saying, we're the Wild West, right?
Or at least we're the folks that, or at least we're the folks that punish the bad actors.
Well, that's good to know.
Broward County had three elected officials go at once here recently. And, you know, unfortunately, this is a dark cloud, and sunshine is never comfortable. It's, it's, it's not comfortable knowing that, that everyone knows exactly what you're doing at any given time, but it's also fundamental for our government that citizens have the exact same access that we do. They're the folks that work so darn hard, so we get paid up here, and I want anyone sitting at home, or the media, for that example, to be able and say, you know what, I met with three lobbyists today. They have the ability to find out who I received money from on a campaign, and then trace whether or not my vote can be purchased and for how much, or make those inferences. That shouldn't just be during campaign season. This sunshine should be throughout our entire, throughout our entire tenure here as county commissioners. And I don't disagree with many of the opinions that have brought up, been brought up here. County staff has worked extremely hard, my staff has worked extremely hard. I've gone over this many, many times personally, and this is a far better document than what it was a few, a few weeks ago. And it has a long way to go, and I am more than willing, that's why I sent this out five days ago, is because I wanted input, I, even though under sunshine, I can't get it, tell where right here, but I wanted folks to be prepared. And clearly, you guys read, clearly you guys read through the ordinance and brought up some very, very good points, if this continues, hopefully to integrate those. But my intent, as stated right at the beginning in Section 1, was not to limit anyone's discourse. My office is open five days a week, and folks are welcome to come in. I think it automatically locks at five, but many times you'll find, find me there, so you're welcome to knock and, and come in. And I don't want to limit anyone's access to me. In fact, I think this ordinance would do the exact opposite. It would encourage people to come and, and, and speak with us. It's just...
How so? Why would somebody that, under the current non-rule of, of registration, why would somebody be inhibited now that would be encouraged later?
And it's a very good point. So a, an issue of, and I'm just, because no one's come to me on All Aboard Florida in quite some time, but assuming there is a 24-hour window we put on this, and I'm willing to shorten that or extend that, that's just an arbitrary number, so, an arbitrary time period. So a citizen goes on and finds out that four lobbyists have met with me over the last two and a half days to discuss issues with the train running through, you know, a neighborhood one way or another. They see that, that this lobby organization has had my ear, and they are strongly opposed to this.
And how do they see, how do they see this? How do they, how are they going to know that you had four lobbyists in?
It's a very, and I'm glad you bring it up, the database that we would be purchasing from Fort Lauderdale would allow you to go in and search by...
It's John Q. Public, you could just...
Yeah, anyone. This is on, this is on the existing county site. You could go in and search Tobias, you could find out who's come to me. You could go out and search the principal, which would be All Aboard Florida, and see which commissioners they've met with. So when you go in to speak, you're, you have an advantage that the lobbyists may not have, because the lobbyist really doesn't know how many citizens have come and spoken with you, because they don't, they don't have to disclose that, they're not being paid. They actually are concerned about their community, and I think this would encourage participation and shed a little light on what happens, not only in our office, because as you know, lobbying happens many times outside that nine-to-five office. Our phone rings many times, and with issues either coming up immediately or, or down the road. So this would seek to at least provide a little bit more insight to the inner workings of government.
So you bring up a good point. You're saying nine-to-five. What if a person that is a registered lobbyist has a son that plays baseball with your son and wants to have lunch with you? What is, what is the public to think about that?
If we are not discussing anything dealing with any of their principals or any business that is going on, then that's okay, just the same way if I see you in Publix tonight and we're shopping and we say, you know, how's your wife? And I unfortunately don't have one, but, you know, you or his son, for that matter. But we discuss that, that has nothing to do with county business, and we are free to discuss that and not violate any sunshine laws. So, you know, those are, those are bounds that we currently live in. This just provides more access for the public to know what, what is going on specifically with lobbying. And let me, the $250 is located in a resolution. If the $250, I'm not stuck on that number. The reason that I came up with the $250 was, there was an estimate of 20 lobbyists, $250, $5,000 over two years. I have no problem with this being $100, and this being paid, borne over lobbyists for a five or a six-year period. I don't care if it's $50. The, the point is that we have full and utter disclosure when it comes to paid individuals, people that are paid to convince us to vote one way or another. I don't think that should be the six months prior to election. I think that it needs to be while we're up here voting.
Do you think, in your opinion, and I understand it's strictly your opinion, do you think if this registry requirement was in place, would that have prevented blue air from occurring?
I, I think if the EDC wasn't here, it would have prevented blue air from happening.
That, that may be, but that wasn't the question I asked you.
It certainly would have, assuming that those actors would have followed this ordinance, and looking at the names of those actors, I honestly don't believe they would have followed those, or, those ordinance, but at least there are some teeth to this. So had they not gone above and beyond into potential bribery, then we could have held their feet to the fire a little bit. But had they disclosed this, it would have been able, we would have been able, and the media, I have worked with the Florida Today quite a bit on this to help draft, because I, I understand many citizens don't go on and, and spend a great deal of time on, on our website, but the media does, and they provide a very, very important function of disseminating information. And I've taken many of the suggestions that I've received from the Florida Today that would help them do their job even better, and incorporated it into this piece. So I think it would have brought more sunshine into, unfortunately, that scourge that happened here in Brevard County.
Okay. Well, I, too, am for smaller government and less bureaucracy and, and less aggravation for people to come and visit us. I think our purpose as elected officials is for us to have a discourse for a give-and-take to our clientele. I think that if we create something that causes a lot of questions from the clientele and our, and our constituents, that we may be hampering that. So while I don't disagree with the premise, I'm having a little problem with all the details and 15 pages worth. And I had my staff look this up, because I was curious, because I've had people calling me today on both sides, you know, badgering me, beating me up. If you're ever an elected official, you'll, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. You can't win, because there's people on both sides that are going to say, you're an idiot, you're whatever, and so, but that goes with the territory, and you know that. So, but I had one person say, I asked, how many of the counties have adopted a regulation like this? And I was told every single one. Well, and I, and he sent me a report, because I wanted to see it in writing, and it said all 67 Florida counties have adopted this. Well, Brevard County hasn't, so the report's fictitious right from the get-go. So I had my staff look up Wesley Hunt's report. It's an overview of Florida and other U.S. municipal lobbying codes from the Jacksonville Office of Ethics and Compliance Oversight. And of the Florida counties with a population over 100,000, which we are one of, 14 do and 17 don't. And when we looked at the entire 67 counties, 14 do and 53 don't. And then when I looked at the counties themselves, interestingly enough, we have Miami-Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Hillsborough, Orange County, Lee County, Deval County, Manatee County. Most of these counties are very, very heavily Democratic. So now I'm wondering, well, why are, why are the Republican, the conservative counties not endorsing this? And the only thing I can come up with is that they're thinking like I am, that do we really need another layer of government? Do we even need, or do we even need more monies going to fix a problem that doesn't exist? You know, if we had, and again, I've only been here two years, but I haven't seen bad people coming in and trying to negatively influence me or offering me bribes, and I'm not saying that doesn't happen somewhere, but I don't see it here. And if it did, we have things in place where we can prevent that. I can report them. We have an attorney, and that I can report it to and question. And we keep a log of every single person that comes into our office, so if somebody, if, if somebody wants to know who's been visiting me, they can find that out quite easily and quite quickly, and they can say the day and the time or whatever. And we have it logged, and I'm sure the other commissioners do, too. So I'm not sure that I'm totally against this, but I'm pretty sure that I'm not for it at this point in time. Just again, because I'm a small government guy, and I just, I'm not real crazy about adding more layers of government. We have Commissioner Zanardi.
After listening, it's almost like you lose your place on what you wanted to ask or say, but I'll just, I guess I'll just start with, you know, I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you know, for lack of a better, you know, cliche phrase, because I like this ordinance. I like the fact that, because I think, aside from the fact that although there may not be things that any of us up here have done... be things that any of us up here have done, or anything shady going on with any of us, you know, there's always rumors about different people that are offered things or however. Maybe those people don't feel like they can approach one of us, because they know that we wouldn't buy into that. I don't know. But I think, you know, another thing that it does is it helps build the public trust. And I think that was my mission in Palm Bay, and that was why I fought so hard for our budget to be transparent and to get all our expenditures online, because I wanted the public to have access. Now, anybody that knows me, and it's been brought up, and I know that Commissioner Tobias wasn't there accusing anybody, but, you know, when I ran for office, I mean, I served two terms on Palm Bay City Council, and I was proud of the fact that no matter who donated $100 or $500 to my campaign, they knew my vote could not be bought, because I think that's a pretty sad day if you would sell your soul, your principles, or who you are for a $200 campaign check, especially when you raise over $50,000. So just to put that on the record. Now, again, I would like to see this workable. I would love to get behind something that, again, demonstrates to the public that we are transparent, and it does work in other counties, because I've made phone calls today too, and it does work. Now, do I think it needs some work? Yes. I want to ensure that citizens are protected, obviously, and I want to ensure that this just applies to paid lobbyists or paid consultants that sole purpose is lobbying, because I think it's great. I mean, I like that idea and this ordinance. I think what we need to do, and I don't know how you do this to make sure we're covered legally, is perhaps scale it down a ton, because I know, and again, about, you know, in reference to costs, it's all coming back to me now. Like I said, you guys talked for so long that, you know, I wanted to remember everything that I wanted to bring up. As far as cost to government, again, that simple budget searchable database where you could search by position and title doesn't cost the city any more money. In fact, I mean, once the finance department, once that stuff all goes together, it's just part of their daily duty to make sure that IT has access to the current finances. So there is no employee or any department that goes through. Have you seen our website? You know, everybody, every county department wants to put everything on the website to make it accessible, but it's so cluttered with information that adding one small thing, it may be, you know, cumbersome initially, and I know they're reworking the website. I mean, the IT staff is wonderful, by the way. But I know everybody wants a piece of that website. What is one small, little registration section that's searchable by our citizens really going to cause? I don't think, I think the fees will take care of that in short order. I really do. So I hate to see us, you know, to just throw this out because it sounds cumbersome. I think that, I think it's great. I mean, like I said, I think 15 pages is a little excessive. I think legally, we could probably trim it down some, and Attorney Scott Knox may not agree with that, but I think that this makes it difficult for people to follow, because I can tell you, I spent a few hours on the revised version that I received today, because I had two headphone calls, again, from both sides. And that's okay. I think it's great. I mean, it's good discourse, and it helps me, you know, navigate a little bit more. Okay, let's address this concern. Let's address that concern. But if it's just for lobbyists, then I would be very proud to support this ordinance, if we can clean it up.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. A couple of good conversation. Our staff also researched similar ordinances, and we found they were all directly related to a problem that had happened, except for one, Belushi County. We haven't discovered why Belushi County put this ordinance into their books, so still working on that, but that was our level of research. Something I'd be willing to do on a commission level, I wouldn't mind putting all my meetings every day online, who I'm meeting with, and maybe just a little subject area. I wouldn't mind doing that. Everything I do is pretty much in the open. I think this is talked about more for commission level, but that's up to everybody else what they want to do, but I wouldn't mind doing that at all. I am just concerned about making people pay $250 to register to have a conversation with me with the category we have. The one thing that's hit my attention tonight is, we kept saying the word "primary function," and that kind of helps change the concept of it to me a little bit. So that's going to take a lot of work to get it towards a primary function of a lobbyist. Now, if someone really is a lobbyist, they're probably already used to going through these types of things from the state level. So that would be something to consider. Whenever we're doing anything to change policy, we already have quasi-judicial, where we have to already expose everything that we're talking about and to whom, so it's out in the open. And so there's already some checks and balances in line. So again, I'm trying to figure out what it is we're trying to accomplish, and I hear you, Mr. Tobias, with some problems going on, and maybe I just need a little more revelation to figure that out and move forward, but I'm just not ready to impose this on my constituents right now. It just hasn't worked out enough in my head to where I can see this is going to be more of a benefit than hurt my community. They all know me. We're out there. We know each other. This local government, we come out of the communities we live in. So I'm just going to be a little bit slower about moving into this and putting one more layer of government in, unless, of course, something happens or something else changes in my mind, this is pretty much where I am. So I don't think I'm ready to support this tonight. Maybe down the road, if it gets turned around a little bit or brought in a different way, maybe, but as of right now, tonight, I don't believe I'll be supporting this bill.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Barfield.
First, you're about the blueware. That would not have been covered by this, because that's a constitutional office. It's a clerk of courts, and which all the constitutional offices would not be affected. Other thing is, and I'm just following up on some things we've talked about, our calendars, our email, all of that is open to the public. That's made available. So you can see any of the meetings, any things that's scheduled, you can even see when my doctor's appointments are. You know, anything you can see on there. So that's available. I do think, though, you know, there's, there needs to be more work on this, and how we want to do about that is another thing. I'm not ready to vote for it the way it is right now. I couldn't do that, but it does need work.
Any other comments? Pleasure of the board.
I'll link a motion on my own recommendation to advertise this in the Florida Today.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tobias to move forward on this and to advertise it in the Florida Today.
And I would second that motion if there were those revisions that I suggested during the discussion. Does that interest you, Mr. Tobias?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I'll second.
And what would those provisions be?
Well, now you're going way back to the conversation, but I think...
Well, we have to have it, so that we can have it part of the record.
No, I'm just joking around, but the main revision was that the primary function of the individual that would have to register would be as a lobbyist, and that's what I want emphasized. And I know, again, this is 15 pages. I, you know, maybe perhaps even if you, you can advertise this ordinance, and I think that there can be modifications, as long as it's not staggering enough to make it before the actual public hearing, as long as it doesn't change the, right, Mr. Knox, as long as it doesn't change the intent.
Right. We can advertise the title as it exists. We can certainly pare down the ordinance and...
I would like that, I think. And I think, you know, in there, you know, there's a section in there that says what it doesn't include. Perhaps we make it more clear that it doesn't exclude citizens or employees of a company employed, you know, not as a lobbyist. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So is that okay?
Are we good?
Yes, it would be amenable to...
No, I'm asking them. Do you have it? You're good? Feel comfortable? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to advertise this in the Florida Today with revisions made by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Fails 3-2. Okay, moving to public comments. Seeing none, we'll go to board reports. Stockton Witten?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just want to note for you that today is the last meeting, Board of County Commissioners meeting, for Jack Masson. As a county staffer, he is retiring on Friday the 13th after 46 or 47 years with the county, so we wish him well. We're going to celebrate Jack's retirement Friday at 2:00 in the Space Coast Room.
Mr. Knox?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barfield?
No report.
Mr. Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this good discussion, though I disagree with the ultimate outcome. I think it's a healthy debate, and I think it's the start of a healthy debate, because I have quite a bit more ethics that, this dealt with lobbyists, but with us, I think that some of the issues that are brought up, I don't think that the folks that take time out of their busy schedules to come and hear what's going on should see us texting, whether we are texting lobbyists or whether we are setting up dinner plans. So I think that after we leave here as elected officials, we, our term of lobbying should, our lobbying ban should be extended. I think that we can personally, if not through the lobbyists, have some more trust or build some more trust that potentially has been lost recently. So I look forward, despite this setback, as we move forward, and I was very happy to hear during this debate, and get it on the record, that many of my fellow commissioners don't like levels of, all these levels of government, and I share that. And I look forward to bringing forward some stuff on CRAs, because that's just an added level of government that I look forward to ripping down, and the fact that it seems as though that we've got some support of levels of government decreasing that. Not only that, with the TDC and the EDC, I think that that's just more levels of government that I agree with you, that we need to tear down. So I don't take this as a defeat. I take this as a good sign as we move forward to, as you guys say, make government smaller. And I thank you for taking the time and doing the due diligence to go through this, and I think it's incumbent on us to have these tough discussions, and I look forward to continuing them. And I do want to thank not only my staff, but Mr. Knox, and who worked very diligently to craft this, and I hope this stays around so future commissioners have something to start forward when they take, you know, public integrity and sunshine seriously for the Brevard County Commission. Thanks.
Commissioner Isnardi.
I'll just comment that I am too disappointed that the lobbyist registration didn't come through. I think, again, I think there was some things that could have been worked through, and I'm a little disappointed. Now, having been one of the ones that supported this, you know, unfortunately, I will never be able to bring it back. However, the commissioners that voted against it would be able to, correct? Or do I have that backwards? No, that's correct.
At this meeting, yes. If it's future meetings, you can move to rescind it if the board, if you get three votes to rescind it, you can rescind the action that was taken today.
All right. But again, I think any efforts to increase transparency, and again, it's not, I don't, I also agree that it's not a layer of government as much as it is, you know, helping promote that private-public trust, and I think that we should all strive in that direction. And I look forward to, in the future, and I know, I don't believe I brought it up during a county meeting, but as far as, you know, the budget and making that a little more transparent of a process as well, rather than having each thing listed individually, each department, I'd rather the average citizen be able to search a database much easier. And I think we can do that with little or no expense at all. So, great discussion, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I just really appreciated the debate. I know not everybody agrees with me all the time, and if they did, we'd get things done a lot quicker. But a good debate is good. You come to good conclusions, and you're able to move forward, and that's why there's five of us up here, not just one. So that's a good thing. So I look forward to the future and moving forward with all the things we're doing. I do believe we're working towards a transparent government with the best bang for the buck we can get. There's always a cost that comes for things that we're trying to do, and the goal is to get the best amount of things you can get done at the lowest amount of cost. It's going to cost. Government does cost, but we want to be able to take that in consideration as we move forward. And I appreciate everybody up here, and I totally respect you. I don't agree with everything you say, but I do respect you, and I give you opportunity to try to change my mind as we move forward, and thank you.
I would like to say that I support, I too support transparency. I think it's extremely important to have public trust. And having said that, again, I'll go back to the fact that I don't see a problem that this solution fixes. It wouldn't have fixed the blueware, and in my two years, I haven't seen a reason that it would have, that we needed this. If I thought for an instant we needed to tighten up our government so that we could prevent a problem like a blueware or something like that, I'd be helping you lead the charge. That's not to say that I can't be persuaded down the road, but at this point in time, I just didn't feel like this ordinance solved the problem. We don't, I don't see the problem that it would have solved. Moving on to more pleasant subjects, but again, I agree with you and my other fellow commissioners that debate is good. I like the back and forth, because we clear the air, and we think about it, and we give it thought, and we give it the attention it needs. On Saturday, March 11th, the 23rd Annual Brevard Cooking From the Heart will be held, sponsored by the Big Brothers and Sisters of Central Florida. It will be 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Melbourne Auditorium. Tickets are $50 each. I would like to challenge my fellow commissioners to take part in this. I have already agreed to do it, and I'm cooking that night. I'm dishing out my favorite brand of peanut butter. No, I'm just kidding. But that's about all the talent that I have as far as cooking, but I'm going to get some outside support from my daughter, who cooks up some mean pasta. So anyway, I would like to challenge my fellow commissioners to step up. This is for a great cause. Big brothers, big sisters, they do great stuff, and if you're available and you're in town, I would encourage you to consider it. It's March 11th, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and you just have to cook for, what I brought last time, I brought two big tins, and when it's gone, it's gone. And they get somewhere between 100 to 200 people show up, and they pay $50, and it raises a lot of money, and it's fun. You get to see all, we had, last, two times ago, we had a guy show up with a whole pig, and he did the whole pig with apple, the whole deal. So it's a cool thing. So anyway, with that, this meeting is adjourned.